The invocation this evening will be given by Reverend Randy Singer, pastor of Trinity Church. Welcome Pastor.
Thank you.
Everybody stand and follow in the invocation. I'd like for everybody to join us with the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Let us pray. Lord, we pray for wisdom according to your word, which says that if any of us lack wisdom, we should ask of you, and you give it liberally and without reproach. And so we ask that you'll give the council wisdom tonight. Pray for your protection. Your word also says that unless the Lord watches over the city, the watchmen stand guard in vain. And Lord, I'm grateful that our city is the home to a lot of brave warriors and first responders, and we pray that you'll continue to protect them as they protect us. And Lord, we pray for prosperity for this city. Lord, your word tells us that we should pray for the peace and prosperity of the city where we live, because if it prospers, we too will prosper. And so according to your word, Lord, we pray for prosperity for Virginia Beach. Lord, for your wisdom, for your protection, for your prosperity, we pray these things according to your word, and in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. (Inaudible) United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much Pastor. Appreciate you. May I have a motion to certify the closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made. Vote's open.
By a vote of eight to zero, you have certified the closed session to be in accordance with the motion to be discussed.
May I? I have a motion to approve the council meeting minutes of April 18th, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, comments? If not, the vote's open.
By a vote of eight to zero, you have approved the minutes as submitted.
Well now move to the consent agenda. Ms. Henley.
Ordinances and resolutions. Item one, resolution to authorize and concur to the issuance by the Joint Industrial Development Authority of Northampton County and its incorporated towns of a revenue bond in an amount not to exceed $10 million, Ray, the Young Men's Christian Association, YMCA, of Southampton Roads. And item five, ordinance to accept and appropriate a $2,359 grant from the Department of State Police through the Virginia Help Eliminate Auto Theft program to the police department, Ray, auto theft training investigations. I move its approval.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. The vote is open.
By a vote of eight to zero, you have approved the consent agenda as read by Mrs. Henley.
We have three items for discussion this evening. The first item is item two, which is resolution to direct the city attorney to draft ordinances, Ray, removing light rail taxes and fee increases.
This is for light rail?
Yes.
I'm sorry, he was talking to me.
I believe you want to comment, Mr. Moss.
I'll wait to hear from the public first.
Okay.
My goodness, the mayor.
All right.
Bob Alms.
Well, this, this one is concerning the light rail now. Which one do you want to talk on? Okay. So you wanted to speak on this one?
Transfer money.
Okay, no problem. I'm sorry. So Diana Howard, I'll call you on that one, I'm sorry.
Before the speakers start, I'd just like to remind everybody that all the speakers will be given three minutes to speak this evening. Thank you. Ms. Howard.
Thank you. Good evening, and my name is Diana Howard, and I'm the chair of the Virginia Beach Tea Party, and we are in favor of removal of the light rail taxes and fees. If you want to keep faith with the voters of Virginia Beach, we voted against light rail. That being said, because you all campaigned and said that you would support what the referendum said, and what the voters said when they voted, then it is up to you to keep that faith with the voters, and respect their decision, and repeal those taxes and fees. If you then want to like reinstate them for something of more value than light rail, then you need to do that, and not just repurpose it to something else. That's just a bait and switch, you know? Especially if you're going to do it for special interests, you know, let's do more stuff down at the oceanfront. So it's time we move away from the oceanfront and protect the home front.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Reece Greenman, and I live in the southern section of the city. And I'm here to support the resolution to repeal, fully repeal, the light rail taxes and fees. As a little bit of a recap, I think the precedent that we are setting if we don't do this is dangerous. How can we have a public debate, have speakers come, have you guys listen to our opinion, or play with your phones and not listen to our opinion, come up here before you to offer our wisdom on the issue, and then you turn around, hold a referendum, we hold a referendum, and instead of repealing the taxes and fees, you just spend them on something else, without the benefit of a public debate on that issue? Think about the precedent that's setting. That means all of these meetings and all this public input is useless, because we're here to talk about the particular issues. Taxes and fees are not fungible. If you were going to do the right thing, you would simply repeal those taxes, and then on the basis of good government, decide on what else you might want to raise them for later, for example, storm water management. And speaking of that, drains not trains, if you were going to do it in an intelligent way, you would get a list of projects, put quantifiable values on how much storm water they're going to actually remove, then do a preliminary engineering study to determine the cost and value of those projects as a system, before you raise one dime in taxes and fees, because you don't know what you're buying. And we can't provide input to you on that process. So I guess what I'm here to say is, people spoke loud and clear, and we said no on light rail, not to use any local funds. Never in our wildest dreams did we imagine that you would just simply say, okay, we're not going to build the light rail, but we're going to keep the taxes and fees that we love. You guys, what are you doing? Please vote to abolish the taxes and fees for light rail, because your constituents told you no. And if you need to raise taxes and fees for a legitimate purpose, then raise them for that purpose and take the public input on that. We told you no. It's not a bait and switch. I guess in conclusion, I would say, that this country was founded, broke away from England, because of taxation without representation. When you pull a con job like this, we end up suffering taxation with misrepresentation, because those taxes and fees were dedicated to light rail, and we told you no. So please vote no, and then just raise the taxes for the things that you need in the budget. I don't want you to set a precedent that you can vote and raise taxes and fees on one issue, and then turn around and spend them on something else. Thank you.
That's all the speakers.
All right. Mr. Moss.
Well, I don't plan to make a motion to dispose of this item, because it's on the agenda on a motion I did not make. You may recall, when this motion was made some 60 days ago, I did make a motion to first and foremost eliminate the taxes that were put in place conjunction with the referendum, so that we could then during the budget process, talk about what we were willing to raise taxes for, and be honest with the public, what tax increases we were actually putting in place. But clearly, a majority of council understood my strategy and my tactic, and chose and said to defer on an eight to three vote, to defer this matter for 60 days. They just didn't count enough days to realize it would take place before we adopted the budget next Tuesday. So we're here talking about it tonight. So, but if you go back and look about which taxes did we in fact, in this council, increase and appropriate? We increased the tax rate over the current rate by 1.8 cents. We made a decision, a majority of this council, I didn't vote for that tax increase, but a majority of this body did, they said that light rail was more important than buying development rights of farmers. They didn't just do it once, they did it in two consecutive budgets. That was .34 cents of the real estate. They went on to say that open space acquisition and improvement, which previously got .22 cents of the meal tax, was less important than light rail, not once, but twice, that those were more important. And lastly, a $5 increase in your annual vehicle license rate. That was a combined revenue generates between $18 and $19 million of revenue before escalation. And all that was said, that light rail was the most important item to increase taxes for in the city of Virginia Beach. Transformational. Well, the public didn't buy the transformational vision of the city manager's recommendation, or a majority of this council, and you know, really John Atkinson, the city treasurer, really deserves a lot of credit, as did all the people who voted, because he gave you an avenue, and you gave yourself a venue to express yourself and be heard over the special interest and their contributions that drove a very bad decision, which you in fact revoked. So now we have this revenue stream that had collected about $30 million of revenue, and it was sitting there. But we did owe the state $20 million, and we paid that. I proposed lump sum to start with, and was glad to see the rest of the council later on came around to my view that we should pay it lump sum, and we potentially might still owe $5 million to the Fed, which left a little around $3 million bucks in the residual to be used, because we had some expenses to pay, which we never should have incurred until we heard from the public. But public be damned, we went out and took leases on land and bought equipment, hired contractors and engineering, and spent money we shouldn't have spent. But that's no time machine. So now we move forward. We have an opportunity to what? Keep faith. They said no, we could have eliminated the taxes, and then have had a debate on what we want to raise taxes for. Well, that's behind us. So now, just today, we've codified, majority are supporting the reconciliation budget, which takes that total revenue stream, and only puts now a penny of it, that's $5.5 million and some change, and the rest of all that revenue goes to things that no revenue even existed for, before we voted for light, voted against light rail. So if light rail had passed, there would be no revenue for either the drain project, or for the maintenance facility, or the road, there would have been no revenue. So I guess we'd be looking at big tax increases, three or four cents, to fund all this stuff. Do you think that would happen? No. So I really think this resolution was all about making sure the debate was about the community's priority. But I will defer to the people who put this on, because they deferred it, we should have taken action before. So I defer to the people who deferred it to now make the motion for its disposition, because they're the people that are in charge.
All right. So you're, you're not going to make a motion?
I didn't, I didn't cause it to be here. No, I have no intention of making a motion. I don't own, the reason why this is on the agenda is a majority of this body, which I was not a party to.
Would anybody else like to comment?
I would. I think when, when we had this before us originally, my thinking anyway, was that at the time that we had had all of the public hearings, and knew what the public was speaking for as far as, as proposals, then we would, would have the information that we would need as to whether or not we in fact needed to then take some action to reallocate this money. So, Mr. City Attorney, would it be appropriate for us to have with the budget documents next week, a resolution addressing reallocating the original money to the funding as it is proposed in the budget?
Well, I, I think the budget effectively does that already.
Well, I think just to, to clear up this whole thing of light rail taxes, I, I think it's maybe important that we get rid of that, because folks keep saying we're still taxing for light rail, when in fact, we have abolished those projects, and they're, they're no longer in the CIP, they're no longer in the budget, and we are instead reallocating to these uses. Just as a, a clean it up, light rail is gone, just so we don't continue to hear this thing that we're still collecting light rail taxes.
If the question is to me, can council add a separate resolution that addresses the issue, or language, yes, the council can always do that if it's a desire.
It would be my thought that it might be the best thing to do, just to resolve it so that we are acting to instead use these funds in another fashion, just to make sure everybody understands that no, we're not still collecting taxes for light rail.
Mr. Wilson, I have a point of clarification. Anyone who pays their real estate tax on June the 5th, and anyone who eats out at a meal between now and June, before midnight, June 30th, because the budget that in place is actually paying a light rail tax, and you cannot deny the factual basis of that.
Well, clearly, if we did not collect those funds, we would not have the money that we needed to return the, the money to the state and the federal government. So I think that was part of the, which, you know, clearly we made clear to everybody during the referendum debates, that that was going to be necessary if there wasn't a light rail project. So I think that, I mean, this, this new budget that we're adopting will take effect July 1.
Correct.
So that resolution would be effective July 1.
That is correct. What I would suggest, Mrs. Henley, is I will sit down with you and show you the language that is in there now, and if you require additional language, we'll work with you to draft it.
Okay, and I'll certainly pass it by other members of council as well. Thank you.
Mr. Earn, did you have a comment?
No, I just thought it was worthwhile to go ahead and have that discussion, and so that we can have that clarity within the budget adoption.
Should we defer this then?
Well, you said that it's not put it on, so I guess...
It's on the agenda, so the question is, do we need to act on it? Mr. Stiles?
You're not required to act on it, no. If there's no motion to approve it, deny it, or defer it, although technically it would remain on...
Correct, it's old business.
It'll remain on old business if you don't do something with it.
I see. Does anybody...
I say withdraw it. Could I make a motion to withdraw it? Have it withdrawn?
Well, you're not the sponsor, so I think what you would really need is a, is a motion to...
Deny it. Deny it.
A motion to deny, or the other motion that can be made is a motion to defer it indefinitely. You, you have a practice of doing that as well.
If I can make a suggestion, since we are having this discussion to clean it up and add that clarity, why don't we have a motion to defer, and then, and then once we have the language to clarify it, why don't we then vote on it for denial, and then put in whatever the clarification, the clarifying word is?
Can you do that?
Legally, you can do that.
Okay.
Well, is there a dis... Do you want us to do it that way?
Make a motion to defer it?
Are you going to make a motion to defer?
I'll make a motion to defer, yes sir.
And I'll second it.
All right.
That's a motion to defer until May 9th, correct? Just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Correct. Just want to make sure we had a specified date.
All right. Motion's been made. Any discussion on the motion? If not, the vote is open.
By a vote of seven to one, you have approved the, the ordinance to May the 9th.
Next item is ordinance to transfer appropriations of $324,184 from the neighborhood dredging reserve to the voter registration and elections, and to the general fund reserve, Ray, the 2017 Republican and Democratic primary elections. We have any speakers?
Yes, sir. Bob Alms.
Welcome, Mr. Alms.
Council, Vice Mayor, and Manager Hanson. Tonight I speak for the Prince of Sam Plaza Civic League. The Civic League really can't be in favor of transferring funds out of flooding CIPs or to the detriment of other parts of the city. We are concerned not only about our area, but the whole city, because we haven't seen the whole effect yet. For that reason, I really can't support the ordinance to transfer money from neighborhood dredging to pay for the primary. Thank you.
Diana Howard.
Obviously, nobody cares about what happened in Hurricane Matthew, that you would actually take money from neighborhood dredging as if it wasn't needed to be dredged, and transferred such a worthless thing as the primary. I'm sure there's plenty of money in the budget on all these other worthless items that should be taken a backseat to dredging to do. And I don't understand why all these new projects aren't being incrementally funded in 15 years like you expect all our neighborhoods to be.
I'm not really sure where the city council's getting their priorities to determine what is a priority for the citizens of Virginia Beach. I just saw in the newspaper today where you're planning to spend another $4 million for some recreation thing down on the beachfront. Now, is that a safety priority over the rest of the citizens of Virginia Beach? You need to get your priorities straight first, and the first priority of any city council is to take care of the people for their safety, whether it's the police, fire, EMS, rescue, or whatever. And right now, we have a flood problem. For almost 20 years now, we've been paying storm water fees, whether it's been in the water bill, or whatever it is, it's been, been taken from the citizens of Virginia Beach. This is the third time I've been up here requesting information as to where all that money has gone, how much was taken each, taken into the city every year, and what happened to that money every year. There's been over a billion dollars of money taken in. Now, what happened to all that money is not a record to the citizens of Virginia Beach. When you take money in, and it's specifically listed storm water fees, then that money is supposed to be used for storm water fees. And if it's not used for that, then it becomes a felony fraud. And that's where I am right now. So we need to get this thing straightened out, or else it's going to go elsewhere. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
That's all the speakers.
All right.
Mr. Hanson, would you, would you please explain where this money's actually coming from?
This, we're putting together a summary to verify the total amount of storm water money that's been put together. We're also going to comply with the Councilman Wood and Councilman Kane's request to have the auditor come in and take a look at that, so...
That's not really, that was not my question.
Okay.
Explain, explain the source of this.
Oh, yes. We had anticipated that we were going to be able to move forward with this project. This project doesn't have 80% of its compliance, and therefore we're not...
This is a dredging project.
It's a neighborhood navigation dredge for navigation.
Navigation dredge.
It's not storm water at all.
This is not a storm water project. It's a navigation project.
Sorry ma'am.
And this was a, a project that didn't make, so therefore it's not, not to be used, because it would have been paid for with SSD if in fact it did, but this, this was just there from general fund money.
Correct, and, and the allocation was in this year, and it's not going to come to pass, and we need to pay for this election, so we targeted something that we won't expend.
It has nothing to do with storm water.
Nothing to do with storm water, ma'am. Apologize.
Navigable water, correct.
Navigation project.
All right. May I have a... Yes.
And there will be some portion of that transfer that will go to the general fund reserve, and not to the primary itself, is that correct? The way it reads, it says, "From the neighborhood dredging project to the office of voter registrar and elections," and it has a conjunction, and then it says, "and," which means something separate, "and to the general fund for reserve." So it's really has two destinations, both the primary cost and the general fund reserve.
And it is correct.
All right, thank you. Mr. Wood.
Let me just make it clear, because I still hear some, some grumbling out there, because the vice mayor and I have been intimately involved with this project and a couple others. This is a neighborhood navigation project that the citizens in the particular neighborhoods voluntarily fund themselves through increased taxes that 80% of them vote for, that they, that they want to, they want to impose this. This has nothing to do with where the water drains, or any kind of flooding whatsoever. It is strictly to, to allow deep water for people to get boats in and out, and, and citizens pay for it. In this particular case, there's excess money. So I just want to make sure everybody's very clear about that.
All right. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, the vote is open.
By a vote of eight to zero, you have approved the ordinance to transfer appropriations to the general registrar.
I would just like to make a comment, because it always bugs me that we have to pay for these primaries. I certainly hope that people will definitely go out and vote, and not think that it's an insignificant thing, because it's costing them over $300,000 to have that primary June 13th, and I hope it's a big turnout.
Probably 5%.
Because we're paying for it, big or small.
Next item is item five, which is ordinance to, excuse me. Next item is item four, which is an ordinance to transfer $1,542,858 from self-contained breathing apparatus to fire training center improvement three. Do you have speaker?
No, sir.
I pulled this item, Mr. Vice Mayor, not so much as prejudiced against the action being proposed, but to take us down a little trip of history lane of how we got here, and it comes a lot to speak to the, to the light rail issue of, once you do taxes for one purpose, it goes on to another. You may recall, two budget cycles back, Mr. Spoor was still the city manager, and we increased the personal property tax 40 cents. I'm sure many people remember that, and I'm sure many of you remember the explanation that we got. The explanation that we got is we had all these expiring breathing apparatuses across the fire department, across the city. Not only did we need to do an immediate, pretty much 100% replacement, but that we needed to have a sustainable source of revenue to establish basically a dedicated trustee account that would ensure that we could collect enough money each and every year, that we could have a sustainable replacement rate, because these suits over time deteriorate and lose their certification. And that was the rationale. If we had a, if this was Star Trek, you could pull up a star date and watch the videotape and hear the explanation for itself. That was two budgets ago. Last budget, we said, oh, well, we really didn't need that 40 cents for that purpose. We took 10 cents and went somewhere else, I never could exactly say where, and 30 cents went to hiring all those police officers. A good thing, public safety, but it had nothing to do with fire breathing apparatuses, the purpose for which the tax was initially imposed, because it was a critical public safety item which we had no lower priority items to fund. Now, this particular thing goes into the CIP account, where we have the money to buy those breathing apparatuses, and this reasoning tells us that that other reasoning we gave you two years ago is totally flawed, must be totally hosed and was mistaken, and we just had the wrong logic thought. I think that was just a sales pitch anyway, I said that at the time, proves to be correct. And now it's available, but with no assessment as to, wait a minute, what is the new thought process about how we're going to do this continually funding, replacement, and certification of the breathing apparatuses for firefighters, so it's some future budget, we're not being asked to pay for it twice? And when we get these analyses, the history is always missing. Fortunately, some of us have an institutional memory here, and, and can remember how we got here. So I'm not so certain that the risk that we say we can take, we can take, because this doesn't even explain how many suits we now have, the age of each suit, what's the replenishment of those suits, is there enough residual money? So what we have here, to me, in my judgment, is an action which we know what they're trying to put it to is a good idea, but am I creating a problem by solving one? And this is the type of things that I think that the public understands, that you tax for one thing, and then you change the reasoning constantly, and I guess they're counting on us to remember. Fortunately, I do. And I just think that I'm uncertain that we're not creating risk in one place versus another, and if the city manager can assure me that he's going to provide the analysis that we didn't get, I will vote for this item. But I think in the future, these things need to go back and talk to the origin of what got that tax to start with, the rationale that went, and what has changed such that the reasoning is now different, and the risk we couldn't take two years ago is...
the reasoning is now different and the risk we couldn't take two years ago is a risk we can take today. I would move for its adoption with that assurance from the city manager.
And I'll give you that assurance.
Thank you.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion, further discussion? If not, the vote's open.
By a vote of eight to zero, you have approved the ordinance to transfer funds from CIP to the fire training center improvement.
All right. Is there any unfinished business? Any new business anybody wants to bring before the formal session? If not, I'm going to adjourn the formal session.